This is more than a sermon. It's a divine encounter. Welcome to today's message with Pastor Ifa Iwazuluki, lead pastor of the Saints Gathering Church. A boy sent by God to raise proofs of the victorious life in Christ all around the world. Get set to walk in victory.
You can make your understanding of the gospel. It happens to a lot of us at some point. You know, when your concept of grace, if you not hear correction or repentance, you think, oh, you're not grace. It's this grace. And, you know, I heard that from Charles Spalding. He said that no matter how we talk about sin, that we must always remember that sin was why Jesus died. So there's, there's no grace or understanding of grace or understanding of the gospel, understanding of anything that you have, that will make sin okay in itself. Does that make sense? So even though there's forgiveness of sins, that does not okay sin. It means that there's forgiveness for it. Because that was why Jesus was, died. So the death of Jesus cannot make sin okay. Rather, the death of Jesus removes from us the consequences of sin. Does that make sense? So that means that no matter the understanding of grace you have, sin must never become light to you. You know, I think how Ephraim Lee said, "This was what slew your master." The only reason why Jesus died was because the way Jesus sinned is what? Is death. So something that slew your master, your loved one, the one you claim that is the Lord of your life, the one you love the most above all, the one who is the most precious, most loved for you, cannot become something you not take what lightly. Does that make sense? Hallelujah. So something that is that great, that the Lord that you value so much died because of, cannot become light to you because you are under grace or under anything that you are inside. And a lot of times when you teach the word, you have to balance between the two. So that you don't give sin destructive, in the sense that a Christian does not die out of guilt. But then you also don't make sin light, that the Christian thinks that, oh, it's not a big deal and it's something to be meddled with. Sin before and after the death of Jesus originates from Satan. And so therefore, it is his tool. So in the sense that before you sin, and Satan has a way of doing this, it's a classic, and he explained this to us before. Before you sin, Satan will make sin look so, not a big deal. After all, it's a lie. After all, everybody's sleeping around. It's just sex now. Then the moment you are done, Satan will now turn that thing that was not a big deal into the mountain of your life. How could you, how can you be claiming to be a child? How can you, you are deceiving the people in that church. Every time they don't know you. The same thing he made that it wasn't a big deal before you did it, it now becomes this big deal after you do it. So it is two. So he knows how to diminish it and how to what? Amplify it. Does that make sense? So the same Satan who would tell you it's not a big deal before you do it, to get you to do it, is the same Satan that will come and be ringing bells in your head that you have offended the 24 elders and the Lord of heaven and you are on your way to hell. There's no remedy for you. And so therefore, the Christian must now live in this swap. Before he sins, if he sins, sin must be a big deal. And then after he sins, because of the sacrifice of Jesus, he must learn to what? To look beyond his sin and look towards Jesus and move on. Does that make sense? You know, you and Satan must never agree. That's just a simple, what do you call it? Rule of thumb. You and Satan must never be in what? In agreement. That means that if Satan makes sin huge before, sorry, after you sin, then you learn how to make sin small after. And when I say make it small, I mean small in the light of what Jesus has done. Does that make sense? Not small in your own reasoning. So after all, other people are doing it. That's not making sin small, though. That's making sin common. And if it's common, you'll do it again. Amen? If your excuse for sin is that after all, other people are doing it, why am I the one that is being single? That you will do it again. It means that you took time to think about it. And you saw that other people were also doing it. And therefore, you have reduced the weight of your sin because others are also sinning. The number of you going to hell is quite large. You can take an extra person. Amen? Others can take an extra person. You don't need to change the number of orders. If you just add one person to it, it's still orders. Hey? People are now looking serious. Yeah, let's be serious. We'll find them being serious today. Amen? Praise the Lord. So last week, we began to talk about that there are seasons in our dealings with God, just like there are seasons in life. And, you know, we must balance that truth. There are seasons. Sometimes I feel like, oh, I thought we are, you know, you can do whatever. You can believe God at any time. Yes, but there are seasons. Just like in life, there are seasons. There are seasons to go to university. Now, you can go to university at 70. But then it's definitely not going to be as easy as if you went to it when you were maybe 18, right? Why? Because there was a season. Your brain was functioning at its best. You didn't have all the other challenges that you had at that time of your life. So that makes it a season, even though you can do it later. But then it's going to be harder to what? To do. Because the season has passed. So spiritually, one thing about seasons, that seasons, when seasons come, things work for you. For example, in a farming season or a planting season, the atmosphere, the rain, everything is helping your crop and your planting to work. There's rain, so the soil is easily more tillable. And then there's natural irrigation that you don't even have to water the place. If you live in a place where they get reasonable rainfall, you don't even have to bother about water. Rain just takes care of everything. So you plant, you weed, but then the natural causes just happen in your what? In your favor. Does that make sense? So but imagine a farmer. Can a farmer plant in dry season? Yes. In today's world, yes. But he will now have to provide his water, Abi, and provide the other things to make it work. Does that make sense? Now, see why seasons are important and why seasons are interesting. Now let's, because spiritually, naturally, we are dealing with, you know, maybe the farmer is very ritual. He provides, you know, irrigation and all that. He doesn't have to bother about his automated. But there's nothing automated spiritually at all. I think I was listening to King Nelson. I said, when he said, I said, "It would be nice." When he said, you know, "Imagine if prayer can be automated." Imagine if you prayed one hour, you could record it. Imagine technology work like that. And then you just play it in your house and go. And the prayer will just, your tongues, you'll be going 24 hours a day in the speaker. And where you are, you'll be feeling power. Yeah, yeah. Your voice, God is conjuring. You know, God doesn't know, you know, what is recorded. So he just knows he's hearing your vow and you are edified. My God, we'll be flying. We'll just be... We will walk with God until we are not. John, I confess, oh, my Jesus, God. I will never be defeated. Don't play it. Ah, man. You come to a place, it's time in front of railroad. Car will hit you, the car will crumble because it can be defeated. It will be so nice. But God, even a man can be scammed like that. Do you understand the point? So nothing is automated what? Spiritually. You have to do it yourself. So remember the example I mentioned, the example of this farmer. So now, let's assume there's no automation. A farmer who is too lazy to plant during rainy season. Do you think that that farmer can plant during dry season and water the soil? I want to think about it. He, when rain was falling, natural things were working. He was too lazy to just plant. Now the rain has stopped. He now has to plant and water the soil, following his track record. What do you think will happen? Is he likely going to plant? And if he were to plant, is he likely going to water it? No. Think I've taught enough today. Abi? Somebody that will not pray when the spirit of prayer is upon the house. Now, can he theoretically pray after? Yes. Because he can do whatever he wants to do. But from his track record, trouble. Do you understand? Because seasons are that, it's like God is helping you. There's, there's a supernatural pool in a certain direction. So it's easy to get in the flow. Now, can you do it by yourself? Theoretically, in some cases, yes. But if you don't do it when there's supernatural help, are you sure you can recruit that discipline and help to do it by yourself? Is it possible? Yes. But is it difficult? Extremely. Does this make sense? Using the example of the farmer, it's a very clear example. If you didn't do it when the natural forces were helping you do it, then it's going to be harder for you when the nature is now against you. Ever planted something when you were small, put in all those containers we used to plant, and then forgot the stuff? And it was dry season. Have you planted? Did you plant anything on your beans and stuff? And maybe for over two weeks and it was dry. By the time you came, you were dead. Sometimes they say, "I don't try." Have you ever tried to revive it? You kept watching it and it never came back? Because there's a phase where it gets to, even if you now put it inside a bottle of water, it will come back again. It's dead. But sometimes you plant the same thing in rainy season. Once it's outside where rain can get it, you can forget about it. And when you come back, it's still there. It's growing. Why? Because nature is now helping you. Does this make sense? So there are such seasons spiritually. For example, let me use those in school, for example. That doesn't, like I said, it doesn't mean you cannot always fix it whenever you want to fix it. But for example, let's say I'm in school. Being in university, that's a good time for spiritual growth. That's where mine began. That's where a lot of people I know began. That's where a lot of the ministers you know today began. In fact, a lot of churches that are making waves in this country, a lot of them began in school. Now somebody is, "I don't have time for church. I'm too busy. I don't have time." He has not understood what it means to not have time yet. Let him graduate. Then he will understand that time. That times and seasons are different. So somebody who struggles to work with God in school, can they work with God outside school? Yes, obviously. But then it is not going to be as easy. Why? Because the discipline required will now be what? Will now be more. Are you with me? So in other words, that means that there are seasons. And then even, even in working with God, even if you're working with him in school, sometimes it depends on how life works for you. There might be a season immediately after you graduate and before you start working. Or NYSE, there's just that few months, depend on a few months, sometimes up to one year, depend on how your schedule works. Where for some people, that's when you pray your destiny out. While for other, that's where they are lounging. They are now free from school. So what happens? Work now starts. Let's assume that this particular fellow was supposed to be a pastor, a minister of the gospel. Now work downstairs. And the color of God has not changed. He now has to find time to pray with work. Do you understand? He has to now find time to pray with work with every other thing he's carrying. Because it, it won't change the fact that he needs to what? To pray. But if that season had been perfect, he could have prayed six days at times. That few months break, he can pray seven hours every day. And he'll be fine. I was thinking about it earlier today. I think January of, that 2017, I prayed. I was praying five, six, every day, every, almost every day. I would just wake up in the morning and put on my viscap and wear my OK boot and enter the railroad and just begin in the trolley whenever my gas finish. And I was from around the city, I pray, 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 reach Agribank, walk, enter the express. One day, my brother drove past me. I was looking at me half a bro. He said, "Everything okay?" He wanted to start. I said, "Don't worry. I'm fine. I'm fine. I'm not mad yet. I'm OK." The way you're looking at your brother from back, and he's moving like this. Is that wondering that, ah? Our village will finally gotten in. Do you understand? Those are what? Are seasons. You're just free. And sometimes I just come back and press food, but at least I done six hours, seven hours. And you find that when you know, things will start happening later than somebody around you might think you're lucky. Because what you're doing today doesn't seem like it's what is giving the results you're seeing. Are you with me? Why? Because just like, imagine you didn't plant anything, and then the farmer is not going to harvest his crop. He also carry who? Then he digs soil, yam, digs soil, yam. Then you now go to your own soil. Where is the yam now? Put it inside a plant. Do you understand? Hallelujah. Why you getting this point? So seasons come. And because we live in time, I've tried to explain this to us. I think I did that also last week. Because we live in time, Satan doesn't have to spend eternity fighting you. He just needs to fight you within time. And in some cases, within specific seasons. Because he knows that once those seasons pass, to recover becomes more difficult. And so he will need to apply less energy to keep you. Does this make sense? Hallelujah. For example, sometimes some people, you know, they're in school, they are not serving God. They graduate, they are just hanging around. Then they marry one wrong girl or wrong boy. You know, Satan's job has reduced. They are now married to his agent. Now, can they do ministry? Can they? Yes, now. But it will be a high, op he task. So Satan's job is less. That's what some people don't understand. Satan's, for example, some people who are joining different, you know, you go, every Facebook, YouTube prayer, you see, say, "Amen. I receive it. I click." Not that anything wrong. But some people who are there, some, not all of them, some people there are supposed to be apostles. But there was a season. And they what? They missed it. And so they are, they are now running around looking for who to pray for them. The people that should have been praying for other people. So now, now they are trying to come back, but they are not coming back fully anymore. Why? Because they have missed what? A season. Now, for some of them, can they recover it? Yes. But the, the journey is, like, they will sweat blood. Like some of them might end up having to divorce. Because the person responsible, the wife or the husband, you were married, doesn't have any such plan in his life. So they'll either be divorced or there'll be a lot of friction. And you can't blame the man or the woman. I didn't meet you serving God, nah. I met a particular girl. She was so angry with her father. She said, "After we have married this man, after many years," they God called him. "Which kind of thing be that one?" So angry. And the man was not even nice. He left them and he went to Bible school. I think for three years. So she was so angry. How can, and if you check that man's, my God had been calling him since. Because sometimes when you find some people are angry with their parents, not all the time, but angry with their parents from ministry, sometimes because their parents started the ministry late. So they were used to another life before they are now used to another life. Do you understand? They were used to living somehow. And then all of a sudden, I say, "Pastor, side, I want to..." What's that one? It's you that God called, nah. Last week, he called you. Why do you want to call all of us? Or the wife will just be uninterested. Why? Because you didn't, you were not, you hadn't answered God's call when you married her. So you can't be blaming her now. It's not her fault. Do you understand this thing? So there are what? There are seasons. Different seasons. There are seasons that determine to an extent whether you will serve God and to the degree that you will serve God. Just like I said, theoretically, you can still do anything. But once you pass a season, it's going to be what? Harder to do the same thing again. Does this make sense? Hallelujah. So but I want to, because I just feel led to say this or to teach along this line. And it might not be for you, it might be because our other churches will listen to you as well in preparation for power conference. So if it's not you, don't view too bad about it. 1 Corinthians 6 verse 18. Let's just project. I was talking in passage, I think, it's the day before yesterday. And we're talking about something. And we got, uh, he told me a story that had to do with a minister of the gospel who had a sexual sin and then how things went south from there. And it was, and I, he was asking me, he said, "Why, why does fornication seem so bad?" I said, and I gave him this scripture. Even though we are still arguing about the explanation, maybe today we have Bible seminar, we'll dance around it a bit. So I said, "But I say, it's only fornication that the Bible is sin against your own body." He said, "Ah." So he was like, "Are you explaining?" And we are just laughing about it. But I'm not going to tell the story because somebody's story. But from my small experience in ministry, sexual sin seems to be the one that binds people the most, including ministers of the gospel, pastors. I've heard a few stories. It's a flea fornication. Everything that a man doeth is without the body. But he that committed fornication, sin against what? His own body. Now, he says, "He that sins, commits fornication, sins against what? His own body." Now, there are many different commentaries on this, but let's just keep that. I'll just give you something that is simple. But process, flee. Flee. That means that the spirit's instruction and the spirit's recommendation around sexual sins is to not get involved at all. He didn't say manage it. He didn't say, uh, be careful. He said flee. Run. Also, just be running. He said flee fornication. Just get away from there. How do I fix it? Run. Don't negotiate. Don't discuss it. Don't say, "How far is bad? How bad is far?" Just run. Hallelujah. So he said that it is the sin that you sin against your body. Now, like I said, there are different comments. Some comment said that, you know, that every other sin is, in a sense, for, for example, that's why I said there are arguments. If someone wants to steal it, they've thought about stealing. They are only going to use their hand because, well, they have to use their hand to take the thing. But then when you're giving me sex, you're sinning against your own body. In other words, your body is part of the sin. Do you understand? Your body is participating or experiencing the sin. So you're sinning against your body. And a lot of times, because just like, the body in itself is not sinful. I think I've explained this before, Abi. Let's say crucify the flesh. He didn't say carry nail and knock this one. Amen? Can I crucify your one? Hallelujah. Jesus Christ, I didn't want to do. This was not supposed to be a deep teaching. Give me a loan. How do I make this thing simple? OK, simple. So fornication is one of the sins that marks your body. Now, I'm not talking about, I mean, mark your body in a sense that your body most times will develop a taste for it. That's why you can find, that's why when it comes to sexual addictions, it looks like your body is acting of its own free will. It's just doing what it wants to do. Because in those acts or in those actions, you're, you're acting against the body. In other words, this was not, let me show you. Go to verse, maybe verse 13. Let me just, let's just, maybe this will help you understand it before. It says, "Meat for the belly and belly for meat, but God shall destroy both it and them." He said, "Now the body is not for what? Fornication." In other words, God did not create the human body for fornication. So you are using it contrary to what it was created for. Does this make sense? So you're sinning against it. You're making it do what it wasn't made for. So you're perverting it. So in other words, you're, it was supposed to go this way. You're making it go that way. So it now learns to go that way. Are you with me? Just leave. But you got at least something, Abi? He was, say, "My body was not made for fornication." So if something is not made for something, I use it for that thing. You are misusing it now, Abi? You are sinning against it, right? All right. So let's just, look at Proverbs 7. Because what I'm saying is that I've read stories, you know, sad stories. I heard one very, very recently. You hear somebody, "Oh, God, God have mercy." I mean, people that you notice with the great men and women of God. They will sleep with somebody this night, preach tomorrow morning. Go back to the place with the person and preach next week. And it's not a mistake. It's like, in fact, I've heard stories of people that travel with, maybe somebody from the choir, and they are traveling with the person with the essence or sleeping with the person, like in between sessions. Why? Because they have, they have trained their body to have mental problem. Don't be saying, "God forbid." Don't, "God forbid" anything. Flee. But they say, "God forbid." They say, "Do what? Flee." "Have God forbid that cow." And don't say, "Ah, fear, I command of..." No. The reason, the reason why Paul say flee is that it can be you. I'm going to tell you, there are things I don't bingle with. It's not, it's not because I'm strong. It's that I'm afraid. There are traps. You should not carry your two legs with your two eyes. Enter inside. Then start shouting. Say, "I believe God's word." Say, "Yeah, it won't happen to me." It won't. Flee. Proverbs 7. We're going to read the whole chapter, so we are going to have to run. Proverbs chapter, I said, from verse 1. Proverbs 7, verse 1. He said, "My son, keep my words and lay up my commandments with thee. Keep my commandments and live. And my law as the apple of thy eye, bind them upon thy fingers, write them upon the tables of thy heart. Say unto wisdom, thou art what? My sister. And can understand in thy king's woman, that they may keep thee from the strange woman." He said, "This is what you're using wisdom for." Before he started using it to develop AI and develop app and develop business strategy. The first thing to use wisdom for is what? To keep you from what? The strange woman and the strange man. Because it looks like sometimes, look, every time I talk about fornication, it's, "Oh, there are strange men, oh. Dangerous men." They are terrible men, oh. Say unto wisdom, thou art my sister, can understand that, that they may keep thee from the strange woman, from the stranger which flattereth with what? Her words. Versus, he said, "For at the window of my house..." Pay attention to this. He's, "I looked through my casement. I looked through the window and beheld among the simple ones." You know, the Bible's use of simple is not, you know, I'm a simple person, oh. Bible's use of simple is just a slight stuff above him beside. It's just me. It don't have sense. That's why I say, the entrance of your word gives understanding to what? To the simple. He didn't have sense before, but as he exposed himself to the word, he now becomes what? Wise. Amen? He's, "I beheld among the simple ones. I descend among the youths, a young man void of what? Understanding." He says, "Passing through the street near her corner, he went the way to her house." Verse 9, "In the twilight, in the evening, in the black and dark of night. And behold, they are meeting a woman with their tie off and hallowed, and shopped till of her hat. She is loud and stubborn. Her feet abide not in her house. Now is she without, now in the street, and lighting weight at every corner." He says, "She, she caught him and kissed him with an impudent face." That, that, you know, she's forward. She's bold. She's not timid, no. She tells you what she wants. Very forward. And said unto him, "I have peace offerings with me. These days I have paid my vows. Therefore came my foot to meet thee diligently to see thy face, and I found thee. I have decked my bed with corplings of tapestry, with carved rocks, with fine lining of Egypt. I have perfumed my bed with my aloes and cinnamon. Come, let us take our field of love until the morning. Let us solace ourselves with love. For the good man is not at home. He's gone a long journey. He has taken a bag of money with him and will come home at the day appointed." With how much, now remember, this is both ways now, Abi? Both male and female, though. Don't, don't be. Today's men are dangerous, so. With how much faith? Not the man, they pack a G-wagon. They carry a woman. Pastor T, should I, should I say the truth? In fact, let me say it. Pastor T came the other day. He said, "A guy stopped for him the other day. He said, 'How are you? We should know each other.'" Levankine, I said, "Hey, Jesus." That guy wanted to say to you, "The good man is not at home." You know, the good man is not at home. You, the bad man, come. He said, "He has taken a bag of money with him and will come home at the day appointed." He goeth after her straight away as an ox goeth to the slaughter. Or as a fool to the correction of the stocks. He said, "Till he dat's tried to his liver. As he bed hesed to the snare, and knoweth not that it's what? For what? For his life. Hacking unto me now, therefore owe ye children, and attend to the words of my mouth. Let not thy heart decline to her ways. Go not astray in her path." Let's read verse 26 together. Want to go? If you'd like, say, we're in the New Testament. OK, oh. Can be in anyone that you want. He said, "For she has cast down what? Many wounded." He said, "Yea, many strong men have been what? Slain by her, both naturally and spiritually." Strong men, men who are doing very well in their career. And then there's a scandal and their whole business, their whole marriage, everything begins to struggle. Ministries have closed because of this kind of thing. Marriages that were for children, now the family is divorced. Children are from broken home because a strange man or a strange woman came into us. The picture. Are you with me? Last verse, verse 27. He said, "Her house is the way to hell. Going down to the chambers of what? Of death." He said, "Her house is the way to hell." Like if you pass, if you enter through the parlor, if you leave the kitchen, hell. So if you have entered through the front door, better use that front and come out. If you pass through the kitchen straight, you are gone. The pastor, if he got it, if you will find out when you get there. Whether it's a figure of speech or it's figurative. He said, "She has cast down many wounded. Yea, many strong men have been what? Slain by her." I'm saying this as you, because, uh, should I add description now? You know, he says in verse, let me just say it because I will cut and join the theme, but I trust the spirit of what he offers. Look at 2nd chapter 2. We'll start from verse 23, I wanted us to read verse 22, but from 23, let me just point out something. Second Timothy two, let's start, okay, this is, go to 22. Thank you, Lord Jesus. He said, flee also what? Youthful lust. Now, Paul is writing Timothy two, he's a young minister and a lot of us here are young, he said, flee youthful lust. Now, he uses that same word to what? To flee. So at least if you know anything about Bible or hermeneutics, you know that, okay, that means that there will be some degree of relationship in those things. And he said youthful lust and certain things are more consistent with what? With young people. Hallelujah. Praise the Lord. He said, flee youthful lust, he said, follow righteousness, this one is not by faith, oh. You can't follow righteousness by faith, why are you following it? You are either righteous or what? Or you're not. So he's talking about in your conduct, say, follow righteousness, faith. What? Charity, that's love, then peace, pieces, walking free of offence and strife and all those stuff. He said, follow peace with them that call on the Lord out of a pure heart. Next verse, 23. He said, but foolish and unlearned questions avoid, knowing that they do gender strife. Twenty-four. And the servant of God must not strive, but be gentle unto all men, apt to teach, patient, uh-huh. In weakness instructing those that oppose themselves, if God peradventure will give them repentance to the acknowledging of the truth. Now, look at 26, that's where I want you to see, that's where we're together, want to go? Uh-huh. Who are taken captive by him at his will. He says, when people do not flee youthful lust, he said that those men are taken captive by Satan at will. Now, if you notice, if you read down, you saw that another thing that he emphasized was also strife, we're going to get to that. So he says that there are certain people who have, they already in the snare of the devil. So Paul is telling Timothy, you know, warn these guys so that they will recover themselves, in other words, the word is awake. The people in those kind of, they are half asleep, they are semi-conscious. So he said that they would wake up and recover themselves out of the snare of who? Of the devil who has taken them captive at his will. There are certain things that someone opens themselves to, sexual sins, offence and strife. What happens, that Satan can take the person captive at what? At will. They will just be fine, 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 then something will just happen, the progress of this man will just collapse. Why? Because they have left certain parts of their life, look at, look at Ephesians four. Thank you, Lord Jesus, are you getting something? I'm just dealing with simple, simple thing, you know, the Bible says that it's the little foxes that spoil the vine, it's just this small, small stuff. Ephesians two. Give me verse 26 or so, I think. Thank you, Lord Jesus. Ah, praise the Lord, now you go read this one. I can actually see it, what? Good luck with you. He said, be angry and what? And sin enough. Now, I've told you, the better arrangement to do this would actually be not angry and sin. But you can live it like, because it's only like they are telling you, be angry, be angry in the name of Jesus. Just make sure when you're angry that you do not sin, how can God be telling you be angry? He said, be angry and sin not. But you can, because some people say, no pastor, don't change it, because they want to be angry. He said, pastor, but I made sure that I didn't sin. No problem, it's fine. But it now says, let not the sun go down upon what? Your wrath. That means that you're angry, don't allow the sun to go down on that anger. He says, neither give place to the devil. So in other words, when I'm angry, when I'm offended, which can happen, that's why I said, don't allow the sun to go down, that means, don't let it linger. Does this make sense? He said, if I allow my anger, my offence, my pain to linger, what will I be doing? I'll be giving what? Place to the devil. Does this make sense? When a man allows pain and hurt to linger, they are giving room to Satan. And from my experience, in this short while, the most destructive sins for Christians have to do with either sexual immorality and stuff around it or offence. In some cases, offence might even be worse. Why is offence worse? Because offence is not like sex, you already know it's a sin. But sometimes, if Rob Peter really offended me, I will be struggling with forgiving him or not forgiving. So, so in that period, most times, when I would discover that I'm doing something wrong, is when the thing has now lingered, do you understand? Is when I now find that, oh, my heart has actually become corrupted. So most people start dealing with offence when it's late. Then it becomes an uphill task that they have to deal with. So, but on the other side, so, but back to second Timothy, he said that such people are taken captive by Satan. So you find, if someone is prone to offence or someone is not disciplined around sexual sins, it means that it doesn't matter how far they've gone. That's why you can hear somebody has been a pastor for forty years and then you now hear story that they used to sleep at, you know, with all the miracles, with this, with that, with that. Because why? There's a part of their life that Satan can take them captive at what? At will. At will. They have left something open that Satan can easily take captive of them. But look at what he said, he said that they may recover themselves, so can they get themselves out of it? Yes. But it means if you're not careful, you can just be in a trap. That Satan can press at any time. And it's sad. It's really sad. Because I've told you before, Satan's game is to ruin your efforts. That's why Jesus said to Peter, I said, he said, Simon, he says, Satan has, what, to have you, that he may sift you as with. In other words, this guy had been with just three years plus, had been in all the church meetings, been in all the Holy Ghost meetings, been in everything. And Satan was like, when I'm done with Peter, he will not even know he went to church. And you find out to be the experience of a lot of people. Most of those on Twitter saying, I'm done with the church, I'm done with church, church, I'm done with, done with. If you look at the root of their done, it's what? It's offence. It's offence. That's what got them done. Satan has taken them what? Captive. The church that they were once loud about, they are now the ones who are anti-church. So these are things, these are traps, these are formidable traps, formidable. You know, the thing he said is this, Satan is crafty, but Satan is not as vast as you think he is. He works with what works. Do you understand? If it works, he will keep using it there. He will not bother, he will use it again. And they use it, if you like fair women, he will keep bringing them. He not, he not gonna stress him, gonna bring another fair one and another fair one. So as long as he keep me, my weakness is fair women, you will keep seeing it. Just wait, after you say, Father, in the name of Jesus, I'm ready to fly, another fair woman will come. Say, it's tall women, you will think that they are scarce, you will keep bringing them your way. Hallelujah. He says, it's thought that can answer that is your problem with English, you know, with nice, you know, when somebody speak nice English, my knees begin to shake, don't worry. Some mad guys that escaped an asylum, but they have Shakespeare English, they're coming. What is God's instruction to do what? Just flee. The easiest way to deal with sexual sins is to never ever get around it. It's so easy. I tell, I tell you, killing me sexually is so easy, just never get around it, never, that's the easiest way, never. I, I, I said this in church, I can't remember last time I took a girl's number just for discourse sake, I can't remember. Before I got married, I can't remember I took number, unless I went to evangelism or I went somewhere, I need your number for to ask questions, to follow up something, but not that I just saw you on the road, thank you, thank you, it's your number, to be talking what? Where are we going to? I'm not going anywhere with anybody. See here. Because some people are always saying, pastor, it's not that easy, now you can learn number. If I don't have your number, no matter how much I like you, I can't chat you in this, I can't say, that guy I saw in shop rights. Hi. And you will get a text, it can't happen. It don't happen. So it just makes your life easy. Now, don't get me wrong, I'm not avast to exchange numbers, I'm just telling you on my own part, like, I don't have the, because I've, why is that? I already know what is not possible. So, because the reason why a lot of Christians get into sexual sins, please pay attention. The reason why a lot of Christians get into sexual sins is not because they want to, is that they want to know how far they can go. And Satan knows. Because there's this pride in being liked. So you want to explore if they like you. There's this pride to say, ah, I can sleep with that guy if I want to. So you want to take the conversation to that point, to see if you will say yes, so you will now say no. Did you read about that woman? You think you're the one laying the trap? You are the bed, my dear. Which you come, you are gone. Are you with me? See, easiest way. So that if they, if you get into a situation, you now be begging God. Not the one you carry your two leg and went into. Now, my cousin telling me now, I understand that, he said, he's large mage at some point, I don't know how he told that story, that they forced the girl, he locked the door. He had to, Jesus had to save him. That makes a bit more sense. Even though I was like, it's you that haven't got, me and such mad people cannot be close enough for them to play that kind of joke on me. They don't smoke me, but, you know, understand it. We can't be that close, God forbid. Although now that we're trying to reach the word, maybe, but I can't imagine. How did we get close? You know, there's, after, after they finish playing the joke, when the girl leaves, you start thinking, how did we, how did these guys think he was okay? I'm bow, it's only that same Jesus that didn't call for this. Do you understand? So, but at least in that case, if you're now saying, Lord Jesus, help me, eh eh, to an extent, you didn't take your leg and enter that gate. But you can be chatting somebody, he says, send picture, he said, do this, you do, you now be talking, talking, talk about sex, talk about this one, talk, talk about everything, like, there are people that you see they are chatting with somebody, like, the reason why you have not slept with this person is that both of you have not been in the same room together, that's all that is waiting, like, it's just if they put two of you in a room. Because that's why when you talk like that for weeks, you now say, when I now visited, I didn't know what happened. You know, you have said everything that happened. You have what you say. Amen? This is not a conversation about sex. But you, what I'm saying is that I just felt led by this, I forgot to just talk about, because why? These are one of those things that, because what happens, like, I've told you, I've heard, I don't want to go into details, but I know men of God, not just head, some of them, I know them. And these are people that are doing well, in other words, it's a trap that if they don't deal with, no matter how far they go, Satan will just, my friend, come here. And what will happen is that outwardly, there's a boldness that, you know, there's sometimes, I'm like, ah ah, you have slept with two, three, four, five people in your church that you are pastor in, how do you preach? If one of them say, excuse me, I have testimony, wouldn't you, wouldn't you be asking the person connecting testimony, please find out what testimony she has? Well, I've got it, Joe. Now, look at me, I'm not blaming them, I'm not even accusing them, but I'm telling you, it becomes what? A trap. And some of them are not trying to recover themselves, they are trying to plan around it, they will build systems. For example, rich people are committing fornication, they have to have systems. They are rarely alone, that means the driver knows. This security man knows. In other words, you're, they see you as a CEO, but the driver driving around knows that sometimes, you say, take me to that guy's house. Let's go and pick up that guy, you know, the hotel now. So when you come and say, yeah, I'm, I tell your wife, you are the best in the world, the driver is just smiling. All your integrity thrown to the dogs. Because you just don't have discipline. There's sometimes, I also wonder, how your brother in church, your brother in church sitting there, there, sister sitting there, and both of them are sitting together, they will come to church, go back, come to church, go back, come to, I'm like, nah. How long they take, run amok? You know, you can't watch it God in peace, because if you lift your hands, the brother will look at you. Why are you deceiving? Then if you lift, he will look at, if you now start crying, the brother is wondering, are we breaking off, this one are crying? You can't watch it God in peace of mind. Hallelujah. I did not plan for you to be laughing, I don't know what you are laughing about. What is God's recommendation, there are two, number one is what? Number two is to what? To recover yourself. That means flee, if you've not got in there also, never put your leg there, now say, I want to find out, you like what you find out. I'm telling you, you won't. Number one, number two, if you have put your leg, do what? Recover it. It's a trap. It's a trap. And this will even extend to pornography and the rest of them, because they are in the same school. It's a trap, recover, because it's like you will pray twelve hours and Satan will just say, come, mate. It's like, it's like they put you on a leash, you know, you're tired of God. He said, recover yourself. In other words, whatever you need to do, do it and get free. Get free. Block who you need to block, delete what, whatever you need to do, pray what you need to pray, study, just do it and what? And get free, recover yourself out of that trap. I say this all the time, since I've been free from pornography, it's over fourteen years now. That's why sometimes, when I find somebody has been free for two years, three years, they do not go back. I'm wondering, were you not bound? I don't understand, I can't go back. Because I know what it means to be bound. To say you will never do it again and you keep doing it again, then finally to be free and then because you had a bad day, you just carry your two leg. I, I just feel tired. Have you not felt tired before? Do you understand? Recover what? Yourself. If you feel bad, go watch movie. Can't sleep, go and do something else with your life, what's your problem? Because it's just a trap, like it means that Satan is saying, ah, if you like, give word of knowledge, oh, if you like, give word of word by knowledge, if you like, raise the dead, oh, anything you like to do, if I don't bless you, pimp, 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 you will appear. It's like calling your name in the mirror. Say, not me. See, Satan is a coward. No, no, I didn't say he should say, I'm just saying, he's a coward. He, he, he boxes below the belt. Boxes below the belt. Boxes below the belt. And so you must understand the fellow you're dealing with. Imagine hijacking love to ruin people's lives. Oh, I like him, he likes me. Or hijacking someone like pornography or masturbation, somebody I praise, I'm in a very, really, you know, you know, you have to, I've said this before, somebody can be passionate about God and be doing something wrong, it doesn't, they do love the Lord, they do, they actually do. So Satan is not fighting their love for the Lord upfront, he's trying to sneak in a blow behind. And then start eroding their confidence. So you see somebody, he's just moving like a shadow of them, you're wondering, ah, but he prays in church, now what? He just move like a shadow. Something is eroding is what? His confidence. When we are talking about the plan of God, the will of God, you're wondering, ah, why is this brother that shouts, why is he not, something is eating out his confidence from under him? Something is eating out our confidence from now, you not know. Terrible stuff. So it's important you understand, he said, the same thing with offence. You find somebody that is very passionate, he loves the Lord, he disdign want the Lord, but somehow Satan has, it's like Satan is holding the person. You will never be fully free. You will never serve God at full capacity. And like I told you, seasons are just time, so this week, you are fighting this brother, then you get over it after three months, then for one month, you're now at full speed, oh, then you get into another one. So for a whole year, nine to ten months out of that year, you are struggling with, dealing with an offence of forgiving the person, forgetting it, getting to another one, and the year has passed, then another year starts. Then another year starts, then another year starts, and then ten years has gone. And in that ten years, the only months we can account for is maybe two, two months by year. And you've not made progress, because that's ten years, ten months of going back. Are you with me? So don't enter such traps. And why am I saying it? Because it's, it's the grand plan of Satan and it's also his small plan. In other words, when you are also going to special meetings, this is also his game. It's either offence before the meeting or after the meeting. It's either sexual sins before the meeting or after the meeting or both. That's why sometimes, notice that after some special strange meetings, power of God everywhere, one year, a boy that has not spoken to you for two months, three months, this man will just suffice, hi. Satan has called him on the phone, has gone to recruit, and most times you recruit an ex quick, quick, he doesn't want to waste time. Are you with me? So you must learn these things, they are simple, but you have to learn them. So, learn to flee. Learn to cut off certain things. Learn to recover what? Yourself. Hallelujah. You know, recover means that you remove everything. You remove yourself from that lifestyle, remove yourself from the thinking. If, if perhaps you have friends who encourage some stuff, remove yourself from what? From them. Recover yourself, that's what he said, to take yourself out of that group. Are we together? So, you must learn to do it, to recover yourself out of the group. Just carry your kaya and be going. It's an escape. For example, I've told people, for example, you can't be trying to deal with pornography and be watching certain types of movies. You are not yet serious yet, you are not yet ready to recover yourself. You know, many years ago, when I was dealing with that stuff, I had to stop watching, that was one MTV, it's not like today where internet is MTV based. That's why you saw people wearing half cloth. So I had to run away from anything based. But that was when Kebba was still a big deal, you had Kebba, watching music. Had to run everything MTV based, bye bye. I was trying to what? To recover what? Myself. Because those are those silent that of Satan. It doesn't look like a big deal, you know, just one rope, one rope, one rope. Then when the team is much, you not, you not be drawing, you not be stalking, you not be wondering, ah, why don't I have control again? Because there has been shooting the arrow, small, small, a little here, a little here, a little here, a little here. One movie here, one movie there, one song there, one, and then gradually, desires are building up. Then when you now logs in, you are now wondering, ah, just like how you really make fish. You have to put it in a bait, it has to be nice. And most times, there's how to reel it, if you do it anyhow, so if they are very strong, they will escape. So you have to go forward, come back, give it the idea that, oh, it's not a big deal. Are you with me? Hallelujah. So I was preparing for power conference, because, like I said, this was not the only thing I planned to say, but well, I've said some of the things. Look at John, let's do what is important to us as well. Exodus 19 verse 9. So, like I said, it does have to be you. It might be you, but it's also something for the future. Because one of, one of the, one of the most painful things that will happen to you as a minister of the gospel is to have a dual life. And, like I said, remember, I, I know enough not to be judgmental, I know. I am back in the Hague in saying something, said that one time, a, a, a minister did something, and he was so angry, how could he do that? And when he was grumbling, God told him, if you enter the same thing, you will do the same thing. Stop. And he said, God, sorry, sir. So, I know that sometimes there are just many things, but there's also wisdom from God's word to apply. Because sometimes, it's not that their heart is not sincere, it's that they were just not wise. And things are now, as it were, gone out of control. And then when you already, it's just like Saul, when you're already king, when you're already the one preaching, when you're already standing in front, and then things are going, you don't know how to now say, I need help. You just carry on and be finding out to cover it. Because when they told Saul that God was angry with him, he told somebody, don't worry, just don't tell anybody. Just act like everything is fine. And that's why it's always better to deal with those tendencies early in life. Just better for you. Are you with me? Exodus 19 verse 9. Saying, the Lord said unto Moses, though I come, this was where we looked at last week, I come unto thee in a thick cloud, that the people may hear when I speak with thee and believe thee forever. And Moses told the words of the people unto the Lord, verse 10. And the Lord said unto Moses, go unto the people and what? And sanctify them today and tomorrow, let them wash their clothes and all. So, we, so looking at this last, uh, week, when he said to sanctify, he says to wash their clothes. If you read that, he said not to sleep with their wives and all that, but it means that they were doing some things to prepare before they had an experience and encounter with, with God. Hallelujah. So that, that gives us the impression that we don't come to special meetings anyhow. We prepare. Why? Because the essence of special meetings is what God will do in those meetings, will now carry on into the next day and the next week and the next month, and really into the rest of our lives. And if you're not prepared, it will affect your capacity to receive, number one, and your capacity to retain. Like we said, I said, if you go to an ocean with a cup of water, even though the ocean is there full of water, you can only go home with what? With a cup. If you're outside and it's raining cat and dog, like we say, and it's just raining, 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 if all you have is one bucket of, one bucket, the only thing you are going home with what? Is one bucket, because that's all you have to fetch your water. So that means that my preparation determines what I go with. Are you with me? So if I'm not prepared, even though I have these great encounters, I might go home with what? With nothing. Not because there was not an encounter, but because I was not what? Prepared. Look at, uh, uh, John 15 verse 1. Hallelujah. John chapter 15 verse 1. He said, I am the true vine, and my father is who? The husband man. Let's read verse 2 together, what to go? Uh huh, he take it away. And every branch that bare fruit, he pudge it that it may... He said, the branch that doesn't bear fruit, it takes it away. He explained to you that that take away doesn't mean to cut off, it means to lift it up, to bring it into a place where it can start bearing fruit. But then look at the next one, he said, the one that bears fruit, he pudges. So, because what is the essence of encounters, meetings, special meetings? Is that we are not going to special meetings to remain the same. No matter how good we are doing, we are going there to receive more, to get better, to improve. And God's principle of improvement is that you have to be parged. There's a reason why you are not doing more. Amen? Abi, it's common sense now. So, before you start doing more, they have to remove the reason why you're not doing more. So he said, the one that bears fruit, he pudges it. Remember what we read in 2 Timothy, where Paul, go to 2 Timothy 2 verse 20, where Paul was writing to Timothy. He said, in, in every house, there are different kinds of vessels. 2 Timothy 2, verse 20, hallelujah. He said, in the great house, there are not only vessels of gold and of silver, but of wood and of earth, and some to honor, and some to what? To dishonor. Next verse 21. He said, if a man therefore pudge himself from these, he shall be a vessel to honor, sanctify. If he pudges himself, he will be sanctified and meet for the master's use and prepared unto every good work. Verse 22. He now says, flee, also youthful loss. Who is he writing to? Timothy, who is a pastor of pastors. Because in 1 Timothy, chapter 1, chapter 3, verse 1, he tells him how to ordain pastors. So Timothy was a pastor in charge of what? Of pastors. So, but that means that a man can already have some success in ministry, and God still instructs him to what? To pudge himself. Do you understand? Just like in normal primary school, secondary school, you have to write an exam, then you get to the next class. So the same way spiritually, to, to take the next task or to go to the next level, there is a pudging that is required. There are things you might not know in primary one, and it's okay, but you can't enter primary two without it. Do you understand? Abi? There are things that, as a primary school student, you don't know, no big deal. But you can't enter SS1 without it. There's no, unless they are changed. There's no primary school child that even knows what is periodic table. And he comes, I want to be a medical doctor. No problem. But in SS1, you say periodic table, you say, what's that? I mean, man, I don't start period, you know that, hey. This one is not grammar school, this one is a... Is Rama's school, is going to school of Ram. Are you with me? So in other words, so he can be the best student in GS1, and there are things he doesn't know yet, and it's okay. But for him to go to GS2, GS3, he has to know something. So, Timothy had already made some progress, and God said what? To Paul, he said, flee, you foolish. He said, the, the, the vessel that sanctifies itself will be fit for the masters. I thought the master was originally using Timothy now. So that, that means that there's a higher use than what you experiencing today. Does that make sense? God can do more with your life. Say, God can do more with my life. So no matter what you experiencing today, no matter what you have seen, no matter what God has done through you, God can do more with your life, way more than you think. But he says, I am the vine. You are the branch, he said, my father is the husband man. He says, the one that bears fruit, he pudges it, so it will bear what? More fruits. Hallelujah. Praise God. And so that means that in the next level that you want to go to, there are some changes that God will require for you to what? To make now. Are you with me? So, so it doesn't mean that, oh, you are not bearing fruit at all. But it means that, ah, God might have said nothing about the previous experience. But the next place he's taking you to, this cannot go with you. And you have to be wise as a believer. Because if you're not careful, you can, you can hang on to certain things, because God lets you get by with them in the previous stage, so you assume it's not a problem. For example, there are Christians who lie. But then they have been fine with it all this way. So, so when you are now saying, this is why something is not happening, they don't understand what you mean by that. After all, I've been lying since, why is he a problem now? Because this phase, mba. Mba. And I want you to know that God reserves the right to say mba. Have you ever seen an ATM card or something, they say, you paid for it, oh, but they say the bank reserves the right? They have the right to what? They say, this property of the card, of the bank, which property of the bank? I paid for this stuff, he didn't give me for free, he says, it's property of UBE Bank. If, if recover, return to the nearest UBE Bank. And some banks, the ATM will swallow your, your card, and you can't get it back, they will shred it. Ben, if you shout enough, there's a, every now and then, some, where the people have given them enough heat, and the brother, sometimes even your own bank, and they will tell you, you stole your own bank. I'm like, will you please replace the next one free? No. You pay again. They reserve what? The right. Are you with me? So God reserves the right to say no. That's why I say, if a, if a man pudges what? Himself. So he can be saying, oh, God, use me for this, God say, mm mm. Not this version of you. Say, I believe, God say, mm mm. You have to change this what? This version, something is wrong with this version. This version will cause me kaya, will cause me trouble. You know, it might look like some ministers are doing well, it's only them and God, and sometimes, only God that knows that this is not how far they could have what? Have gone. You know, maybe the pastor, you collect the offering, collect the money, collect every money and chop. So he say, oh, God, we are going to the nations. Now, he might be doing very well in his state. And for you, you say, ah, even though he's stealing God's money, he's still succeeding. It's God that knows that these guys should have been ahead around the world. Are you with me? It's God that knows the foothold. Because that's how God works. The Bible says that God will resist what? The proud. God's system of doing things a lot of times is not to take from, is to remove his hand. So most times, all what happened with God is that that place where you are, you will not stay there. And God will just put his hands, walking as here. Because, okay, you feel you got here by yourself, oh, yeah, go to the next level by yourself. And you will stretch and die. I heard a story about someone that went to Abuja, and he say, the minister, another South Church, he say, he had 100 million, so he say, I don't worry now, we're gonna move it, we're gonna move this ministry to the next level. Rented, did this one, put deep boat everywhere, wah 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 wah. And the church dropped to three people. Promotion does not come from the east or from the west, it comes from the Lord. Now, that doesn't mean arranging things is wrong. But you have to go and pray now. It's God, it's not by arranging and debt. You can preach debt and you'll be the only one in the debt. Are you with me? So, don't, don't think it wrong that God begins to call out things that he didn't call out two years ago. It means that there's a next phase. And for you to do the next phase, this has to drop. Why? It's going to corrupt your service. It's going to corrupt your service. It's going to corrupt your service. You know, for example, you can be like, you know, it's most more, you can be lying about reports. Oh, you send your, maybe your cell, your charity, they say, I prayed two hours, man, and you didn't pray. You just said. If you become pastor, you will lie. You will say there were 2,000 people in the crusade, when there was 200, you will lie. You will create souls. Yes, now, when you say 200 souls saved, when there were only two, have you not created 190 something souls? You and God are the same now, you are now the creator. Oh, God. You would think I'm joking about this. You, you'll be amazed. Pastor, you say they had something like that. He say, he was a pastor for them in high school. And they would do WCC, he say, ah, they would send me money, he would pack bus with people to come for meeting. So, but the problem is, the people will always be complaining, which kind of meeting? So what he does is that he will, from his school, he say, if I'm going to Lagos, free bus. So all those that want to go to Lagos, he will pack them, and he will say, ah, the only thing is that you have to sleep in the camp just one night, you can return to Lagos. And so they will take free bus and come for the program. So the problem is that they didn't, they limited that prayer is 24 hours, so... Are these members of our church? You know, sometimes you ask the question, why? Why not? Judas stole until he sold Jesus. Sin will always graduate. See sin? He must go to the next level. That's why, if you ask any person who has been involved in fornication, the first time, we just kissed, we just, before just, we could reach plateau state. We just, we just, we just, pastor, I don't know what happened, no, it's just so. From where you stopped last, this is just. Do you understand what I mean? From where you, because you are looking at it as if you, you didn't start from where you, you have been moving. So, from where you stopped last, this is just a slight, just, just, it was just a move, an extra step. So you can find people that they've made out 20 times for the final step together. But if you check, every single time they went a step further, because sin would always what? Graduate. Always go. Judas went from stealing 29 here, 2 denari, 1 denari, half denari, and sold the master. Imagine. No, you know, when you look at it, you're like, how? But, it's no big, that's how, that's why the Bible says that later he repented, he's I came. You see, the thing with sin is that you are, once you start sinning, you don't, you don't have sense again. You don't. You might think you do, but you don't, because Satan is the author of sin. So to sin is to, is to tell Satan, I want to outsmart you. That is not possible. You can't outsmart Satan in Satan's game. Are you with me? So, even though you might be forgiven and the righteousness of God in Christ Jesus, and anything you want to be as well, Satan, it's all what we read, he said, he said that, this is how great men are destroyed. Satan will put his hook in you. He say, recover what? Yourself. See, be free and free indeed, life is better free. Better free, oh. It's better free. So, as we are going into power conference, free yourself. So it's not after the power conference, you now start fighting this devil. At least make some progress. Make some progress. Make some progress. So it's not just this thing, but this are, this are, I don't know why, but I just felt led to just emphasize this. And then, of course, prayerlessness, laziness, apathy, all those things. I've talked, I think I, I emphasize prayer, and that is also something that God is emphasizing strongly. Pray. Start, don't wait for the conference, till he can do your prayer life, we can do it now. Even if you have to drag it through the mud, drag it until he comes alive. And then, so that when, when the fire come on it, there will be, imagine if the fire had fallen and Elijah's sacrifice was not ready. Deal with those things. Laziness, pride, selfishness. It can be very destructive. Judas was selfish, amongst other things, he was selfish, he was self-centered. Himself. Imagine, imagine when that woman came and broke the alabaster box at Jesus's feet. Because that's how Satan will manipulate you, and you start thinking like you don't have brain in your head. Because if you study very well, it was Judas who led the other disciples to start complaining, wah, wah, a whole year's wage. And all that fight, so that they will not break the alabaster box, was so that they will sell the box and give the money to the treasury, so that Judas can steal it. He was just fighting for who? Himself. And he roped in all those... And he roped in all those, see, they careful about those who want to rope you into their fight. They don't care about you. They don't. They might not hate you consciously, but they don't care about you. Because in a fight that you are not involved, you don't gain anything by joining. Abi? You are not the person coordinating, they are not coordinating with you. So what do you gain by joining? Nothing. So be careful. This, because these are the things that you come into a meeting and God is moving. And then Satan, the accused, will come and pat in your ear. With what you did last week. How do you think you can receive? If you receive now, doesn't mean you not go to K K's house again. Doesn't mean you not go to Jennifer's house again. Doesn't mean you not go to Chin A's house again. If you receive, if you receive, if you receive. I forgot somebody's name, like God's name of spirit. Hope you leave me alone. I know that, I've been in meetings, I've, I've gone to meetings. Sometimes you are listening to a girl, you see the girl, she's trying to not fall on the, the power of God is on her strong, but she's thinking about it. If she use now, doesn't mean she will not go to that boy's house again. She will be moving like this, sometimes they are crying, I'm not like, I'm not saying anything. Crying, and you think the cry is God, you can't take this from me. And God is power. That's some of your, don't worry. Because I don't think, ah, once power of God move in a place, everything, you'll be amazed though. So Nicky said he had an in-law like that. And he was cheating on the, on the, on the wife, because, so he met the guy. Said, ah, what's up? Why are you living like this? Why are you maturing your family and all that? He said, they, 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 he was crying. He was crying. I know what I'm doing, he's not, he says, stop it, and I said, no. And he was, he was weeping, like he was sobbing, his body was vibrating, and he still said, no. The human will can be something that is scary. Sometimes somebody can be in church for three months and be saying no to God in every service. The spirit to be with you, say, Mba. They can even fall over the power and be down there and say, God, if it's this matter, no. That's why it's called the what? A trap. Satan has, he has put the person in the trap. That's why, that's why we have to pray, so that power beyond the person will not jam the person. But don't put yourself in that place where, you know, it's like somebody is, yeah, is dead, they not shock him. Increase. Increase before you, maybe the last one, you not shock the person. And sometimes even after you increase, the person now wakes up, he now enters life support. I know what I'm telling you from experience, oh. Sometimes even after you now put that food dose, you shock the person. After that meeting, they look so bright and happy, don't know that they, they've not recovered, though they just entered life support. By tomorrow, the symptoms begin to manifest again. But it's not as bad, but you now have to start following them. How are you? Ah, what's up? Have you not prayed? Have you prayed? What's up? I didn't see you on Wednesday, I didn't see you on Thursday. You thought that they have gotten free. Don't put yourself in that situation, it's a bad place to be. Can you be recovered from it? Yes, but don't put yourself, see, Satan is not your friend. Not your friend. Eventually, Judas wanted to be recovered. And he went to, that's how Satan, Satan, the, the typical examples were the Pharisees. He went to them and said, take back your money, release the man, he's innocent. They say, what is that to us? And I said, I'm feeling so bad, I feel so guilty, I feel so, what I've done so long. Please, 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 take your money back, release him, let's cancel. Look at this idiot. What is that to us? The Pharisees didn't have conscience. Very, very, because their believers were all like that, very separated conscience. They can do offence and lead worship. And come back. They can come from a, I heard they still like that, went from the gas has go to church, both of them together will go from the house, go back to the house, go back and be going. They are Pharisees, that's how they are. And the Pharisees, they took the money, they didn't put it back into the offering box, they say it's, it's blood money. They knew. They knew it was blood money. Say, let's go and use them, buy burial ground for strangers. Let your conscience get you out. Are you with me? Why am I saying these things? This is, sometimes you think you are not, Judas was not just headstrong. He was being influenced by Satan. There is no decision that you are making that is really influence free. Your stubbornness, something inspiring it. You are not used to hear what, something is what? Inspiring it. Thank God that Paul told us you can recover what? Yourself. That's why, and if you have recovered yourself, don't let them whisper to you. You know, that's how Satan is. The children of Israel were saying, let's go back to Egypt. Yeah. They were killing your children. Satan can make something you left attractive. Satan is that killer. Satan can make poison look like it's the best food in the world. Are you with me? So be careful. Be careful. Be careful. So as you come into power conference, whether this has to do with you, or whether it's prayer that is the problem, whether it's inconsistency, whatever it is, don't wait for that day. Let God from now begin to mark you that you're making the changes. Do you understand? You're making the preparations, you're readying yourself as the sacrifice. You're sure that his fire will fall. And you're ready as worth the sacrifice. Are you with me? There are no difficulties for our God. There are none. No matter how far you've gone. But why did I say all this? I didn't say this to discourage, I, I said this so that in case you are listening to Satan, that I'm telling you, you can combine the two. That's a trap. That's a trap. Nobody can combine sin and serving God. Eventually, one will collapse. If it doesn't collapse, you will corrupt your service of God. That's why there are some men of God, the same man of God, saying, ah, he prayed for me, I got hit of cancer. Another woman is saying, he took, I hate virginity. Another guy is saying, he raped me. So there are two testimonies of the same person. One of God's power, another of Satan's power. One person, one person hosting two people. Just like James, you say, good water and bad water coming out of what? Of one spring. Depends on the day you come, you can come in the morning, see good water, come in the night, poison. So make up your mind, you're not going to be that kind of water. Only good water will come out from you. Say, only good water will come out of me. You know, see, the biggest blessing a man of God can be, and everybody here is a man of God, is to be consistent, to bless you, like, because what it means that somebody will see from far, say, wow, this guy is so passionate about God. And when they come close to you, they will, they will even be more, wow, they're like, wow. It's real. Be real. Be real. Play games with God. That doesn't mean you're perfect, but be real. Don't hide away any part of your life, expose it to God's word. Expose it to God's word. Expose your fears to God's word. Expose your thoughts to God's word. Don't have, that's why just to say, he say, when a man looks at a woman to lust after her, he says she has what? He has committed, because sometimes you might not do anything, but you will be looking at a girl and addressing her, doing all kinds with him or her. Because sometimes, you know, we talk about it, when you talk about lust, it looks like it's only guys that are involved in it. It's only guys that are looking at women. Women can talk, have you been about, analyze on women when they are talking about men before? Oh, they are pretending now. Because nobody, you know, men sort of allow themselves to be talked, it's almost exciting that women are talking about, so we don't complain. It's women that complain about that, that I went to the gym and a, a, a girl was looking at, sorry, a man was looking at me, they will post it on YouTube, and it's not everybody's piece. Have you seen women before? Women will not just look, they will come and touch you. They touch your stomach, say, ah, he's strong, girl. Nah. And nobody will see it as a crime, they can say, after all, why did he get the abs? You know, men are not pretending. We are honest. He didn't get the abs, he not going for MMA. He removed the jet on purpose. But the woman will now remove the jet and be asking you why you are looking at her. And set camera to capture you looking. God saves some people. But the man, the man, ah, he's very excited. So lust is not just the one side, you know? Forget all this, because like, it will make you look like it's only men that are looking at women. Wonderful. Now, I'm not anti-men, in fact, I'm even accused of being pro-women, but I'm just being honest. Now, we did that search one time in church, and I found that there are, there are more male virgins in the world than women. So in case you are somewhere, saying, all men, all men are looking for, it's not true. See, you see, Satan will take certain narratives. Because he hates what he's doing in the world. Don't allow, because you can be a woman, and because nobody will ever complain, you just be thinking all kinds of strange thoughts, but you not say it out. Because Jesus understands that, he, 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 you don't have, see, some people are dealing with lust, I'm telling you from experience and as a pastor, some people are dealing with lust and lust with anybody. They haven't. But Satan has built a castle in their minds. You don't have to do anything to be bound. You don't have to. The Bible says, guard your heart with what? With all diligence. Say, out of it, what? The issues, the boundaries of your life. So you don't have to, if, if, some people have not come there for fornication, and they are fighting lust more than those who have. Because they have no, they have led their minds run mad. Let your mind be trash can. Don't watch everything you see. Celebrity, eh, release their sex tape, what is wrong with you? Somebody releases a tape, is it your business? They release it to you? Did they tag you to the release? Some people are just stupid. Say, eh, this singer's sex tape, please, you just dump there. Say, I want to see if he's really, okay. You watch it for fifteen minutes. They're using, what are you looking for? Do you know what their body looks like, so you know it's really, what's your problem? Some people are just doing, you're wondering, this guy. Then tomorrow, because that one, the light is not good, you can't look for the one that they did in studio with proper lighting to know if it's really. Are you with me? Deal with your faults. Because why am I saying, because these are things that, you are in special meetings, everybody's praying, hands are about to be laid on you, and you are in a fight. Can I receive? Will I not receive? You are now ten seconds to the encounter you were waiting for. Satan will now click his strap. And in those final moments, instead of receiving from God, you are thinking, am I good enough? Am I worthy? Am I sanctified enough? The moment will pass. So when as conference, they say, a trap, he will still wait for you, that period, he will just arrange the trap again. And you will put what? Your leg. Say, I'm wise. So not just in prayerlessness, prayerlessness is a curse. Sorry. I'm saying that to myself, I'm saying that to you. Why? Because nothing that is ministered to you can be sustained without prayer. So Satan knows, even if they lay hands on you and Jesus appears to you and say, my son, take over the world. If you not pray, he will take over nothing. So that's why I'm saying, because there's nothing that happens to you. There is no plan of God that will not require prayer. Trust God will have the time to teach, teach this in power conference, like, if you, if you, if you recover your prayer life, you have recovered your life. Because no matter what God tells you, no matter where he sends you, no matter what he requires you to do, you will require to what? To pray. You can't do anything. You and God can not do business without prayer. How will you receive this power if you not pray? So that means that no matter what he's doing to you, if Satan can capture your prayer life, you are finished. That was Satan's plan. Do you know that was his plan for Peter? Jesus told Simon, he says, Simon, Satan has desired to have you, that he may what? Sift you as sweet. Where did Satan go, Satan go to attack? His prayer life. That's why Jesus told him, pray so he will not fall into temptation. Peter said, pastor, never. He said, oh God. Satan already had his plan, and Satan knew where Peter's defense would come from. He went to attack his prayer life. Thank God for Jesus who stood for him. Because Peter could have competed like Judas. Jesus knew you. He say, Si, Satan has desired to have you. He say, pray so you will not fall. And Satan went after his prayer life. Some sleep is satanic. In fact, in fact, every sleep and prayer is satanic, at different levels. It's one of the most. It's just bad. I know what I'm telling my leaders, sometimes you are doing V G. Everybody will struggle, the moment we say amen, everybody will start to, ah, fuck, oh, 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 the same people that are going like that. Everybody will just open, George V G's, once the V G finishes, the same people that we are doing, I will discuss this is. Don't, Satan, don't pray this prayer. The same you that are trying to pray, you'll be struggling. The moment you say amen, you pick your phone, you can be away for the next three hours. Why? Satan knows, a lot of the fight is not in the, is not in the battle. Peter had lost that fight. Since, before the first soldier came there, he had lost. Are you with me? So if we don't deal with prayer, you will show up during temptation, and you'll be trying to muster strength, and the strength will not come. That's why you hear some boys say, they say, I said no now, I said no, but did he refuse no? But I said no. Your no was, because the no didn't sound like you meant it. Because there was no strength anymore. You had lost your strength. That's why I said, ah, but why did he send him this picture, pastor? I don't know. Because most times, the point of temptation is not the point of the battle. Most battles are lost or won in the place of what? Of prayer. Are you with me? It's something that God is reteaching me again, I've said it over and over, is to pray. I'm learning to pray again. I'm learning that you don't have any right to expect God to use you if you will not pray. Use you and do what? Use you and do what? Use you for what? If you will not pray, what he will use you for? How can God trust you if you can pray? How can he trust you to do what? How can you go and pray? Imagine representing God that you don't talk to. How would you know what he wants done? How would you know his plan? How would you know his will? So no matter what you're doing, the next few, we have one weekend, maybe one or two days, recover, recover it like this. Satan is outside the gate, recover your prayer life. And as you are recovering it, build systems that will sustain it after. I don't know, say, pray for, pray for power conference, because that one, I prepare for power conference, yeah, yeah, then, after Sunday, say, holy glory. What a meeting. Mba. Is that on Monday, that prayer life that you recovered will still be what? Brilliant. In fact, now fire has come on it. Do you understand? Hallelujah. So I encourage you. We have just two more services to go. Let nobody come there looking at me. God, the pastor looking my direction, this is, don't have expectation, but in other words, let you and God have settled the matter. That when I look your direction, I look away from your direction, you and God have what? Have settled. If you come down, we are dancing from morning to night, you and God have settled the matter. You will live there with all that God has for you. Don't come there empty, I say, I just hope that God will totally. Now, of course, sinners can come that way or invitees, but not you, you know about this meeting for months. Come there, just, let's just go. No. I know there will be miracles, I know there will be healings, I know there will be the supernatural flowing even after the meeting, but as I pray, these are the things that God is still emphasizing. There will be transformation. And like I said, over and over again, it has already begun. Key in now. Don't wait for that key in now. You will be, you will be better positioned to receive. Better positioned to receive. Make up your mind that you will not be there as a foreign body. No. You are there for the Lord, and the Lord is there for you. You people have settled. Hallelujah. Just pray in the Holy Ghost, just two or three minutes, and just pray again. You will not be held in any way, in any shape, in any form, not by, not by the enemy. Offends will not find room in your heart. Sexual sin and vices will not find room in your heart. Prayerlessness will no longer be tolerated in your life. Pride and selfishness and self-centeredness will no longer be permitted in your life. Satan will not succeed anymore in your life. The enemy will not take you captive at will. There's a call of God, he's not attacking you for nothing, it's because there's a call. There was a call of God on Peter's life, that was why Satan singled him out for ruin. The attack on your prayer life is for something worse. It's for something worse, it's for something worse, don't take it lightly, it's for something worse. Pray, just one, two, three more minutes, let's pray for our prayer lives. The attack on your prayer life is not for nothing. It's not just sleep, it's not just, I can't, I can't wake up, Satan is planning something worse. Some of us, there has already been a security and part of it, you're seeing your fire go off. You're seeing yourself do things you would never have done before. You're seeing yourself think things you would never have thought before. Recover yourself. Awake! Thou thou that sleepers, arise from the dead, and Christ will give you light. Eh, you have his word, that if you are awake, he will give you light. If you stand up, he will hold your hand. Do away with your excuses, do away with the explanation, say, Lord, help me. Awake! Awake thou that sleepers, arise from the dead, and Christ will give you light. Prayerlessness is too costly. If not because Jesus intervened for Peter, that one night of death, it would have cost him. Cost him so dearly. If one night could be that costly, imagine how much weeks and months will cost. Awake thou that sleepers. Awake thou that sleepers. Awake thou that sleepers. Arise from the dead. Don't talk like a fool, I say, ah, but I've been praying since, I've been praying since, you are about to discover what happens to those who do not pray. The cost is too high. The suicidal part in your head are because you're not being close to the fires of prayer. The parts of good him are because you are most cold, close to the fires of prayer. There's a man ought always to pray and not to give up. To not pray is to choose the path of defeat. There's strength in prayer. You will not bow, you will not lead, you will not give room to the devil. He says that it has destroyed many mighty men. It will not be you, it will not be you, my brother, it will not be you, my sister, recover yourself! Deliver yourself. Awake, 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 awake. Awake! 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 In your prayer life, awake! In your conduct, awake! In your love work, awake! Awake! Awake thou that sleepers. Arise from the dead. And Christ will give you light, you have his word, you have his word. Do not allow Satan to tell you, ah, but you've tried before, you have that word, he said, awake! Awake thou that sleepers, arise from the dead, and Christ will give you light. It's time to stop telling the story, pastor, I don't know how it happened, I don't know what happened, eh, it's time to stop telling the story. It begins with the prayer life. It begins with the prayer life. We cannot do this thing by repower, our power must come from on high. Dead that wait upon the law will renew their strength, they will mount up with wings as eagles. They will run and they will not be weary. They will walk and not faint. Weariness is proof that the power, the fires of prayer have gone low. Fainting is proof that the fires of prayer have gone low. It's a bird that wait upon the law shall renew their strength, they shall mount up with wings as eagles. They shall run and not be weary, they shall walk and not flinch, and not faint, you will not faint if you pray. You will not be weary if you will go to the fires of prayer and still there, still there, tarry. Tarry until you be endued with power from on high. Stay until you are glutton upon, stay, 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 stay! Your story will not be forward and backward, it will not be one step forward, two step backward, that's not your story anymore. Awake! Thank you, Jesus. There's fresh oil for your prayer life. Yah, ha, 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 there's fresh oil for your prayer life. Fresh grace. As the Lord is doing in my life in this season, may he do in yours. Fresh grace to pray. To pray for hours. Your struggles are ended. Thank you, Lord. Hallelujah.
Thank you for listening, we know you have been blessed. To listen to more messages, go to our website at thesaintsgathering.org and follow Pastor Ifanyi Wazuloke on all social media platforms at Ifanyi Wazuloke.